It being 6:30, I'm going to open the meeting. David is in Concord doing his legislative work. He told me he's got 100 bills between today and tomorrow that are on the docket. So, on the meeting order, going to start with hearings. First hearing is the Enfield land use case P 25-03-01. Sandra J. Shannard is seeking minor subdivision approval to divide land at 198 Boys Camp Road, map nine, lot 11, currently totaling 65.9 acres into two lots. One of the new lots will become 8.3 acres, the other will become 57.6 acres. Subject parcel is located within the R5 Rural Residential Agricultural District. This lot is owned by Sandra J. Shannard Revocum of Ross Daniel J. Shannard Trust fee. Have we got Linda online? You don't see her. And I need to appoint two alternates tonight. And I appoint Bill and Whitney tonight.
David, come in about the video.
Oh, yes. If you're on video on Microsoft Teams, can you please shut off your video until you're speaking? As well as if you mute on. Thank you. Maybe. We only do that because people who are online overwhelm the screen.
You then. It's your turn.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
You're on.
I'm on, okay. My name is Chris Rollins. I'm a land surveyor representing Sandra Shannard. If I stand up occasionally, it's because, not because I'm impatient, it's because I have a back problem that's, I'm heading for surgery next month. And so, sitting is a little detrimental for me sometimes. Sandra contacted me. She owns lot 11 on map nine, Boys Camp Road, with 65 acres. And it has a home. And she wanted to divide off the home and leave 57 acres in the back. So, we did come up with a situation where we'd have 260 feet of road frontage for the 57 acres. And I flagged out a proposed, a suggested right center line for a driveway where there'd be no wetland impact. And there's a nice knoll back there where I show suggested home site. And that also appears to be a good spot for, if somebody wanted to build, with no impact on any wetland. The property fronts on Dickno Brook for quite a ways here. A lot of the back land is very good wildlife property, wildlife land. I have a small map that I will distribute here that shows the relationship of the wildlife area that is mapped as good wildlife supporting area, how that relates to the home site here. I have a driveway location staked out, and I filled out the driveway permit application. It has what I believe is sufficient site distance. I'm not sure if the highway, the road agent has looked at that. Let me get these other sheets distributed.
Just give me a second, Chris. We might, if you're lined up, yeah, shut it off.
There's, you remember the icon you just, when I left? You missed the icon on the whole screen.
You get passed each around.
Yeah. Who, I guess I need to know who it is. Oh, just. Janice, are you able to shut your video off? There should be an icon there with a little camera.
These sheets.
She did get a driveway permit already from DPH.
Thank you. These sheets show the relationship of what your GIS system shows as wildlife supporting area, which would be the tan hatched area. And the green hatched area is shown to be the highest ranking wildlife area in the region. So, the proposed home site is, I would say roughly 600 feet from any of the closest wildlife, high ranking wildlife areas. So, I thought that was interesting because none of us want the wildlife to be disrupted any more than it's possible. We do have, let's see.
I've got it back.
You did?
Yeah, I just showed it so you know we do have a driveway.
Okay, that's good. We do have a driveway permit, which is good. So, we have the existing driveway for the home, existing home. And that's along existing driveway. And the new driveway has been permitted, so.
Any questions from the board?
I think I've, more of a generalized question. One is, I'm just curious, on your grid north, how is that different from true north?
Grid north and true north is just, well, you can't measure it with a compass.
Does that refer to the state plane?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. And the other question, maybe you can help. My understanding, the states recently changed the Butts requirements. And it says this weird thing of 50 feet angles and distance. And it's the actual wording of it, but I read it like last week. And does that come into play for, from what we do? I think ours is 200 feet.
Well, I.
250 feet.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
But I will, I go by, I know, I go by your regulations.
Yeah, if you looked into that and if it was, if ours was more restrictive, then it's okay.
Yeah.
Just the way the state was written, it was like, I'm reading this, I can't read this.
Yeah.
I figured out a piece of paper and sort of, try to figure this out because it was weird.
It's, yeah, it's difficult. I'll get something probably from the Land Surveyors Association clearing off the wording. Making it in English, you know?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I will accept the motion if one would like to put it forward. Any, I don't see any, no, no hands are up from the public out there? What was the thing? It's not better closed. Oh, I see a hand. MD.
Hello.
Yeah.
My, my concern is, I am the head trustee of the Colette Foundation, and our property abuts a great, a great deal of the other property. And I, I am just trying to make sure that none of these proceedings would interfere with the Colette trail.
The trail is entirely on the other side of the.
Yeah, no, it's on the other side of Dickno Brook.
Okay, well, that's my only concern. And that would be the only thing, the only issue that I would have. Other than that, everything's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
This lot had been, not too long ago logged off, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yep. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern. Anybody want to put a motion or?
If you close the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm closing the public here. Any final questions from board members?
I'm sorry, there is someone.
We got somebody else. Okay, I've got, how about Alan Strickland first?
Hi, hi. Yes, Alan Strickland, just a comment. I've had the pleasure of working with Chris Rollins. And his work is, from my perspective, is excellent. And I would trust him fully about his road locations and his building sites. And in fact, Chris and I worked on the survey line on the far end of the property several, many years ago. So, I just would like to thank Chris for all the work. He's done a lot of volunteer work for the town. And I really trust him as a surveyor. That's it.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Is the other MD, the same MD or a different MD? Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm fine. I don't need anything. Sorry.
Okay. Now, can I, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Wait, wait. Somebody else raised their hand.
Okay, we got somebody else. I've got the person who, Janice? You need to unmute. Still need to unmute.
There should be an icon on your screen.
Yeah, there should be a little microphone there to unmute yourself. We are not hearing you. No, you still need to unmute. Not hearing you.
You're still on mute. You need to unmute by pressing the microphone button at the top of your screen, top right-hand side?
Or it could be bottom left.
How's that? Yeah, there I am.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I had a quick question on what was the purpose of the subdivision?
The purpose is to separate the home, existing home with eight acres and from the remaining land, making a, yeah, that's all.
Oh, so she wasn't planning on like selling it or anything like that?
Well, that, it would be her privilege, her ability to sell it as two, as two separate pieces after the approval, if indeed it's approved.
All right, so it's just a subdividing at this point?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah. Are you able to shut off your video? Should be a little camera there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hold on, yeah.
No.
There we go.
We done?
No, we're done. Now, I'm going to close the, I think that's it. Closing the public hearing. I will accept the motion if someone would like to put it forward.
I will move. We accept the subdivision.
All in favor? All opposed? Seeing no opposition, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
When will you have the plaque for somebody to sign?
I'm leaving it with you.
Get it to my line?
I have it with you.
Great.
And I'm going to leave this roll in a tube for Sandra.
Someone, let me see, yeah.
Thanks for the back.
The one thing for us, Chris.
I'll take a couple back.
Thank you. You have the ball. Like it. I had a, this is my longest driving trip coming over here. I've never driven this far before.
There.
Yeah, I've got trees now.
Yeah.
Good luck with your operation.
Thank you.
Okay, second hearing tonight, Enfield land case. P 25-03-02, Liberty Utilities will give a presentation. And related hearing will be held regarding an application to cut vegetation on following scenic roads in Enfield, Boys Camp, Lock Haven, Oak Hill, Ivy, Eastman Hill, and Kluge Road.
Hello again. My name is Richard Clark. I'm a consulting utility forester for Liberty Utilities. I am representing Liberty tonight as Heather was unable to attend.
I'm going to open the public here. Thank you.
So, we realized after the last meeting we were here, we forgot to include Boys Camp Road. So, we did reapply for a hearing. In addition, there were a couple of extra trees, one on Lock Haven, one on Kluge, that we would like to include as well. At the time, we had reviewed those roads. They did not pose a risk. But after further review, recognized that they posed a larger risk than initially. So, it is. One, two, three, four, five, six. Should be 14 trees, 12 on Boys Camp Road, as well as one on Kluge and one on Lock Haven. In addition to those trees, there is a regular cycle maintenance that we do. We do it on a cyclical basis in more than five years, all in, with the purpose of providing safe and reliable power. We do recognize that it is a scenic road, so we tend to go a little bit lighter. We do our best to follow the PUC 307-10 rules. That's eight feet to the side of the conductor, 10 feet below flat cutting where able, and 15 feet above. Like I said, scenic roads, we tend to go a little later. We do obtain permission from landowners with every item of work that we do. So, if a landowner is not okay with us working there, we will not do work there. Due to New Hampshire RSAs, we are required to also go to the planning board and report to work on those roads, so.
Any questions from the board?
Have these, I don't know if this is a different, other than the two trees when they were here prior, the other woman, woman that was there? This is just like, it seems like a different format. I'm not sure.
It may, same different list, so it's a different road of trees. But formatting wise, it's probably just a color change.
I'm just, I happen to live on Ivy Road. And, and I'm just wondering, have you flagged the trees there yet?
Yes, yes. Any trees that we are looking to remove as part of the scenic road have been flagged with either a red or yellow ribbon? Red is full removal. Yellow means we're just looking to take a larger limb out of the tree, following best practices.
Any other questions from the board? Any question from the public here? Nothing, Dave? I've got a C.
Seeley.
Online, Seeley, online. Please unmute yourself or turn up your volume. Can you turn up your volume on your computer, Seeley?
I do. Could you hear me?
Just barely.
All right, let me take one more thing to do.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you now.
Close the mic.
Not hearing you, Seeley.
Can you hear me?
Here we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Am I any louder?
You're good.
No?
Yes, yes.
I'm good? You can hear me?
You're good.
Okay, good. Okay. I've, one thing I wanted to remind the planning board is that, that there's a six, the six inch diameter on the, on the, on the trees. And these are all in the RSA. That that be, that be done. And that only cut the brush that they, or the, around these trees. It's really necessary. And I was surprised to hear there are 14 trees you want to cut. And I'm asking whether those have been marked for someone to view them.
Yes, they have. They are, they are marked in red ribbon or a yellow ribbon. Red, meaning that we would like to remove the tree due to structural issues with it or health decline, or the risk that it poses to our power lines based on proximity in interest of providing a safe area to customers. Or yellow being a larger limb that poses a significant risk.
I'd like to say though, that you're talking of something, a larger tree that's close to your line. If it's that large, it's like 20 years old or something if you're going to see that. And that's, that's something I think that you folks could work around without cutting the whole tree. You know, just take it up on the top where you, where you usually do. Is that doable?
We will, we will prune where necessary. However, if the tree is marked for removal, it poses significant risk. It meets our threshold for action where we feel that it is a greater risk to the public. It's declining, it's dead. Yes, they, these are more, most likely to be dead or declining trees.
All right, well, I think the RSA says dead trees. It doesn't, I don't know if anything says it has to be a declining tree.
I have a little bit of stairs of this.
What, has to be a declining tree?
No, if it, if it, if it poses a hazard. Dead or poses a hazard.
What, all right, the hazard of what is this? Because I worry about this kind of thing when, you know.
So, the risk we are assessing for is, is safe and reliable power. So, this is a tree that could take down a power line that would pose a significant risk to the public. So, we are looking to mitigate that prior to an incident happening in order to save customers money as well.
I know, I, excuse me, I know all about the, about saving money and so on, so forth. But we're trying to save somewhat of our country enhancement, so to speak. And, you know, something really does not have to be cut. I wouldn't like to see it cut.
We trim as much as possible.
But let me say something, that there are trees all around New Hampshire. They're going to fall and knock down lines. So, it really has to be a gone tree. And, and that's what I'd like to see. You know, that it's really, really looked at to see what it can last. Or, you know, wait another few years if it's worse, you got more ammo, you know? But I don't think, because I live up here, I don't think there are that many trees that really go over. I think there's, that are not need to be cut. That, wait, that do, no, there are many trees that do go over that need to be cut. All right, but I, some of, and those are the ones that are, we had a couple this past year, but they were gone, those trees. But so I'm saying to really try and protect what you can. We know about all the other, everybody knows that, me too, you know? So, I just want to add that. And I just want the support of the planning board to continue to protect the limits that the, all the, anybody who wants to do this work has what they can do. That's it. That's it. I'm finished. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your input, Seeley.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board? I'm now going to close the public hearing. I will accept a motion or discussion.
Motion, we approve the. All this is tree cutting.
Sec, scenic road tree cutting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for your time.
We have no conceptuals tonight.
Sir David's joining.
And David is joining. Welcome, David.
Well, this, you don't have to.
We'll get both hands or we'll get Frack?
Do I need to respond?
No, I thought it was Dave Frack. I was going to have to start. No conceptuals, select board report. Eric?
All right. We had our first meeting, following town meeting and some reorganization meeting. But as you can see, I'm still here. So, yeah, still doing it for the next year. Then discussed, you know, town meeting, had just a debrief on it and set the date for next year's deliberative session. It's not firm because of scheduling things to do with locations. But January 31st would be the deliberative session next year. And then, I mean, the voting day would be the same, second Tuesday in, in March. Other than that, we're supposed to just reorganize the board.
Okay. And the school district set theirs last night.
Did they?
The 31st in the morning.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Yeah.
So, we may.
We'll probably be over Enfield, Bill, in the afternoon.
I don't know what we'll do.
Okay.
We discussed not having a conflicting time with what the school does. Show that people could attend both meetings.
Yes, okay.
But that's part of why ours was tentative.
Yeah. They did set it last night. The question. During the Shed Street property, noticed, this comes up ever so often. Someone requires about why it was sold for as low as it was and, you know, the sort of thing. Is there anywhere on the website where one could go and get a summary of that project and where it stands?
I don't know if it's on the website, but certainly, yes, the summary of it exists and where it stands. Where it currently stands is the final monitoring, environmental monitoring is happening. We're waiting for a report from DES. And once that final report comes through, things can start moving again. But the short version is the, the select board did an R and P process to get proposals for that property and included a variety of of, basically we obtained everything. Only one proposal was submitted. But one of the things that we sort of prioritized was long-term revenues to the town versus the short-term sale price. So, that's the, specifically around the sale price, that is, you know, sort of the finance answer was we prioritized the long-term tax revenue potential over the short-term sale. And making sure that we got a project that we felt would benefit the community as a whole. Does that answer your question? But it does exist. I don't know if it's on the website. And I can ask Ed about that.
Just like to be able to point to somebody, you know, go here and you can read the story.
Yeah, and saying go read the minutes from eight different meetings is not satisfying.
I would say, yeah. I think if you, in the select, in the minutes, if you put in Shed Street.
Yeah, you'd find it all.
Everything that was related will, well, minutes. Everything that was related will, well, minutes.
For one fifteen years.
Yeah, will pop up. But that's probably, yeah, like I said, it's.
It's not satisfying.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Eric?
Well, I got, Eric or Rob. Um, this is magazine from Forest Notes, it's from the Forest Society, they, if you remember, you get one of these like once a month. So, this uh, this issue, and I'll give it to either one of you, is a short article about whaleback. Uh, very nice. And it's something maybe, just as promotional, it was more like promotional of whaleback and all the great things they're doing.
Yeah, I would like to read it.
Yeah.
That'd be something maybe we could link to someone.
They're in the middle of like a big fundraising.
Yeah, yeah.
Newsletter.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the newspaper too.
Right.
The theme covered.
Right.
Any other questions, Eric? Rob, you're up.
Uh, just uh, real quick. Set over there. Um, the snowmobiling was awesome, just a couple of you have asked, thank you very much. Last uh, meeting, I was up there in Pittsburgh and we had a great time. Very busy right now in uh, the Land Houston Community Development Office. Working on the final details of the lease arrangement with uh, Optimistic for the small piece of land that they're gonna need to set that cooler on. You guys probably familiar with that. We did go down and have a, a little tour, see them in the process of upfitting the building. There's a lot of that work happening right now. Uh, they're hoping actually to be brewing in there early April. Uh, the tasting room is likely gonna take a little while longer. He's thinking maybe July first for the tasting room to be ready. Uh, there's a lot of, lot of moving parts, as you might imagine, with licensing and we're dealing a little bit, City Eleven has come forward requesting some industrial pre-treatment uh, work be done at that site. Which is fairly common for bigger breweries. I don't really see it as being super important, but they have requested it at that site. But it is basically, uh, when you're washing brew kettles and fermenting tanks, you use two different types of uh, soap. One will be an alkaline and one will be acid. Uh, each one is swinging pH in a dramatic direction. And so that what they don't want is all that wash water with a strange pH to go down all at once. Um, so if you can kind of batch up the wash water by blending the two different types of product together, you can get it to a neutral state before you release it. So that's something that they're asking us to do, City Eleven has new staff, that's kind of uh, on top of that. Uh, the car washes are also being uh, monitored for that same kind of thing. Um, interestingly, the car wash, uh, what we know as Randy's Car Wash, the original car wash down on the Canaan end of Route Four, um, has changed hands. You guys probably knew that Randy passed away not too long ago, maybe just a few months ago, um, and that, that has now been sold. So we have new owners there that seem very interested in, sort of sprucing it up and getting things dialed back in. We were having a few issues with people, you know, going in there, putting the twenty dollar bill in for a fifteen dollar wash and not getting their change. And just little things like that, so uh, hopefully the new ownership will be able to get a, get a control and get back on top of that. We are in the midst of planning our community resilience event with uh, professional facilitators. That will be on May twenty ninth. Um, that is sort of by invite, it's gonna be a sort of a small group of stakeholders from Enfield, business, selectmen, different representatives, different industries, we'll have somebody from the school board and um, it's uh, something that the selectmen were presented and really liked the idea. And uh, it's pretty, it's, it's kind of a nice uh, sort of facilitated process to sort of look at how to be resilient as a community, and we'll be working on that. I may have mentioned at one point in June, on the sixth of June, we're gonna host the New Hampshire Planners Association at the Enfield Community Building. That one will be uh, kind of a neat event. Um, that one is gonna be a combination of Lebanon and Enfield. I think Lebanon will be doing some presentations in the morning with some of their staff, talking about some of the projects they've been working on. And then we will be doing in the afternoon, uh, some discussions, town manager and maybe some planning staff to sort of talk about things that we've been working on, that you guys are right in the middle of, including our master plan, including some of the zoning changes we've done, including what we're working on now with the HOP two grant and so forth, so that's kind of exciting. Obviously, we're getting ready to put out the newsletter for next month, and we'll be promoting our uh, April event for uh, this HOP two grant on the twenty sixth of May. So we'll be promoting that, trying to get as much uh, word out there as we can. Let's see, what else? Uh, fair amount of interest in a few parcels in, in Enfield. One of the big ones I'm working on right now is, right now it's an abandoned house on about four and a half acres on Route Four, almost directly across from the old Mickey's Roadside Cafe. You guys probably know that place, it's got a bunch of broken windows. It's a big white house, the trees are all grown up against the building. In fact, we've been talking about trying to work with the select board and seeing if it would be one of those that we could get at least taken down. Um, I think that parcel's gonna sell, and there is a developer highly interested. Sewer and water lot has a lot of potential. So I've been talking, that's a, it's a developer from Boston who has some connections to Dartmouth. Really nice guy, super smart. He's actually got a, a master's degree from MIT in development. So um, it's been fun to talk to him. We're also still looking at that lot on Route Four behind what we call the Hawthorne Property, which is right next to the old Enfield Garage. Uh, Tom Hershey purchased that, that's about five and a half acres on Route Four. Right now it has access to municipal water and is within about fifty feet of municipal sewer. So there's some potential there, there are some wet spots in the field and, you know, would maybe limit what could be done there, but uh, it has potential, and so we do have some interest in that. We've, we've seen a few developers in to talk and have sent them Tom's way to talk to him about partnerships and so forth. Uh, let's see, what else? Um, there's a few other buildings on Route Four that we're looking at, we're gonna talk to the select board. Sort of start with a very mild-mannered, easy letter that says, hey, you've got this abandoned building that's been sitting there, what can we do to help you get this thing turned around? We'd rather not, uh, town manager and I would rather not go at them with any guns blazing, so obviously try to work with them. The ones that come to mind are the abandoned Colonial, right next to Dunkin' Donuts, you probably familiar with? The last productive use that building had was growing marijuana illegally, if you, if anybody heard that story? Uh, and then across the street, sort of next to the Family Dollar, is a house that's been abandoned, there's a pickup truck in the yard and it's just sitting there. I mean, there's, there's several on Route Four as you headed towards Lebanon. And it just boggles, boggles my mind to think that people are just sitting on real estate that certainly could be put to some kind of a productive use. So that's something that uh, Ed Town Manager and I are working on, and we'll be working with select board as well. Zoning, all of a sudden, has picked up substantially. We do have four applications for next month. Uh, number one is um, Jim Kelleher, you guys approved the site plan for his uh, uh, multifamily uh, use conversion at uh, Copeland Block. As you guys pointed out, then we're gonna do a zoning special exception uh, as part of your uh, conditions of approval. So that'll be on the docket. Jim Keller has also purchased a property on uh, technically it's Pillsbury Street, but it's right next to Shed Street. It was formerly owned by Tim Taylor, it's directly across the river from the old mill property on Baltic Street. It would have been known in, in many years ago as the Lower Baltic Mill, as postcards in my office that show what that building looked like. It burned a long time ago. There's still a foundation sitting on the property, it's adjacent to the rail trail. It does have some unique characteristics that are gonna make it difficult. Jim Keller seems like he's, you know, pushing forward with it, he's gonna ask for setback intrusion for Massoma River. He wants to do multifamily there, uh, like condos, essentially. Um, so he'll be there.
Yeah, the bridge, and the rail trail and the bridge on that side?
Yeah, it's, it's right there.
And like all the three streets sort of.
Yeah, yes.
Showing, you know?
Yeah, it's always been kind of a nice little spot to park to get on the rail.
Yeah.
Tim Taylor was not super happy that people were parking there. Um, it's a very narrow lot.
Yeah.
It uh, it's also interesting too, and it's several properties as we've dealt with them throughout town. The, the fact that Enfield was a railroad town and the railroad line came right through the middle of town, in most spots in Enfield downtown, the railroad actually featured siding where they could actually take cars off the main line and park them, or unloading a freight or loading a freight. And so uh, there's some right-of-way, uh, and I actually was able to share some of those old surveys that you shared with me, and those were awesome.
Yeah.
Um, and so he's actually working, that's a, that's a challenge to work with DOT to sort of say, hey, you know, there's old right-of-way here that you don't need, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, and so, but he is the kind of guy that has success doing that already, including right on Main Street where he built a six-unit apartment building.
Yeah.
That was a very similar type deal where there was a siding, then all of those properties, the old laundromat and um, you know, all those properties right there were all serviced by siding for rail, for unloading of freight. I mean, think, of course, food stores and warehouses and so forth. And of course, the, the Lower Baltic Mill, I think they were carting uh, flannel there at some, some point, long, long time ago, it was quite a place. Um, obviously, there's still legacy there for, for the town. You need something, Nate?
I was just gonna say that Dave Bofe's had his hand up for, just don't want to miss that.
No. Um, uh, I'll just wrap it up, the uh, another hearing coming up for uh, ZBA next month is the self-storage business on Lovejoy Brook Road, uh, owned by the family, uh, last name Aiken. Um, if you guys know the history there, it was originally developed by Bob La Croix. He uh, had self-storage business with several different types of use going on there as well. There was the, the self-storage sort of the furthest end of Lovejoy, and then he had the big sort of warehouse building where he was doing his car auctions, and he was storing a lot of the classic cars he was selling at his car dealership. These uh, Aikens have purchased that uh, uh, big warehouse that Bob La Croix had and would like to actually take that building down and build uh, some more traditional self-storage buildings on that site. Um, I do have some maps on that, I don't want to take us too far in the weeds on it, but uh, I've gotta make a determination of whether or not site plan review is necessary for that. So it's been a storage business, it will continue to be a storage business, and we think it's rather much a even Steven square footage swap for what they're taking down and replacing. My heart of hearts is saying I don't think site plan is necessary there. Um, if it is, it would be minor site plan. Um, but the intensity of use actually is going to go down. The Bob La Croix uh, classic car thing was fairly intense, there was a lot of traffic going in and out of there. We've talked about gasoline and, you know, flammable liquids and all that kind of stuff, gonna go away. Um, and it will be, uh, self-storage is determined to be the most uh, gentle commercial use that you could possibly have. It's like one or two trips a day of generation of traffic. Uh, it's, it's, and this is, you know, we, as we talked earlier about the Route Four Zone, it's sort of is one of those properties that sort of reveals what I would think is the weakness of the Route Four Zone, it's just really doesn't, doesn't jibe well with this use. Um, you know, there's requirements for sidewalks, well, the place is surrounded by a chain-linked fence. Do you think sidewalks are necessary? Um, roof pitch. Have you ever seen a self-storage with a steep roof pitch? They usually have very, very gentle pitch, if, if any at all. Um, so they're gonna be in requesting several variances from the ZBA. It's April eighth, so it's the night before your meeting, uh, your next meeting, so we'll be giving you some updates at the next meeting about what that is up to. Um, that's about it, and if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to go. We're, we're very busy, as the snow melts off, and this happens about every year, you know, speculation starts to kick in. I am a little worried, I think there's sort of a general I'll say uh, fear about building right now because of the uncertainty of costs. You know, these people have done, like Larry Mead Farms have done all these pro forma, um, you know, analysis of their costs, and if you throw plywood and lumber from Canada up twenty-five percent, I think it kind of changes the dynamics substantially. So uh, I don't know, I mean, I have people coming in to say to me, that is a done deal, they're, we'll, we'll see that built, you know, when pigs fly, you know where. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned about that kind of stuff, to see what's happening, it's, it's the uncertainty that's gonna really hurt us. Uh, as you know, builders want to know how much it's gonna cost, how much they can make. And if they don't know how much it's gonna cost, how much they can make, they sort of tend to sort of back away. Talked to the developer in Lebanon who's doing the clean laundry site, he's just, he's apoplectic right now because everything is sort of out the window. And so we'll see what happens. But it's still fairly busy in my office, a lot of calls, a lot of people coming through. We do have two new ZDA members too. Woman who is a executive assistant in the Lebanon Planning Office named Tiffany Adams has just been elected to our board of ZDA, really excited about her, just talked to her today, had a great call. Uh, turns out she's actually assistant uh, zoning administrator for City of Leb. So I think she'll bring some great uh, experience and knowledge and so forth about how they do things in Lebanon. Hopefully, she's gonna be a great addition, and then uh, Tim Lenahan, as a write-in candidate, successfully beat out uh, Mike Dean, who was our chair, who did not uh, file for uh, reelection in time, so he tried a write-in campaign but was defeated by Tim. So we'll be uh, relatively new uh, ZDA. Uh, the big, big thing on the first part of the agenda for them next month is to elect a new chair. So that'll be uh, interesting to see how it all picks out, we do have a zoning board member here right now, so um, looking forward to that, looking forward to working with the new board, hopefully uh, um, did you guys all get the thing I sent around too? I think I got it from Nate, actually, the Office of Planning and Development sent out a really neat thing that even for people that have been on the board, I think it's great, it's like a one-hour luncheon learn that's virtual, that you can sign up for on that email that I sent, and I sent it to ZDA and to planning board members. I encourage everybody to take advantage of those uh, resources.
Excuse me, I think you intended to send it to the ZDA, but it not gets sent to the ZDA.
Oh, you didn't see it? I put both of them on there, okay.
Uh, it said to the ZDA.
Oh.
Uh, and the planning board. But the actual send did not go to anybody.
How did you get it?
I have a bird that's dropped it off.
Oh, okay. I'll make sure to send that out, do that right after the meeting tonight.
I have a question, but we can let David go first, since he's had his hand up.
Dave Bofe?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, regarding the, the, the Kelleher property, a couple of flags went up for me, um, which were the right-of-ways for the river and for the rail trail. And I um, say, would say that it behooves um, the planning board to closely watch those as important advance um, rulings, and if we, if you roll over those, what's the point of having a planning board and zoning and other things like that? So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Whitney?
I just was curious about the April event, are we planning to advertise on the listserv?
Oh, yeah.
And are we using social media?
Yes, yeah, we'll use social media, we're gonna use newsletter, town website.
Oshers.
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking maybe a small ad in the paper.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll, we'll use as many uh, resources as available to us. Maybe some flyers up on bulletin boards at Jake's and Proctor's. Trying to get the word out as much as we can, and obviously you guys can also help by specifically inviting people. That is, to me, even more effective than anything that we can do, is if you could say, hey, I want you there, you're somebody that I thought should be there. Definitely spread the word as you guys can. Send out a flyer, basically like a PDF that you guys can email to any contacts that you have. It's obviously all hands on deck, we'd like to get as many people as we can so that we have good representation of what public's opinions are, so.
Go ahead.
Regarding the Keller property, just so I understand the process, they have uh, come up with some sort of concept plan, asked you if this would fit, you've pointed out what variances they would need. There's really no role for the planning board then. Unless they were to come.
Until they've got the variances.
Well, unless they were to come now
Right.
for a conceptual hearing and ask.
Right, they will have to come for site plan review.
Sure, I understand, that's after the variances.
Yeah, they've gone that way because if they don't get the variances, obviously they can't build. Because if they, the, the property is not wide enough, then if you don't get a variance to the river or you get because it's probably road setback issue.
It's, it's river.
It's a river.
It's actually kind of a long lot, so he's got.
Sideline rail and the one rail trail setback is a, is a property. It's a, and a butter product.
Right.
A mother. So you're up there, you just.
But it's on the other side of the river. That's why the river's the issue.
Yeah. He also needs shoreland. He needs shoreland.
So, um, The point I'm trying to make is, it's not so much the details of this particular project, but that the process by which your office either recommends or doesn't or whatever about conceptual hearing.
You asked me?
Okay, so, uh, yeah, we, the first thing we do is we consult the zoning. What's a zoning in the district? Is it an allowed use? Yes, it is. Absolutely. Um, he, he's gonna need special exception, same as he does for, uh, the Copland Block for multifamily in the community business district. Uh, so we supplied for that as well. He's applied for variance for neither. I will say that that site was a very, very hundred years ago. And it hasn't been much since, but, uh, uh, you know, he's, he's the kind of guy.
It's not in our port right now.
It's not. It's not.
Again, my question. Certainly, uh, uh, an applicant could say to themselves, I want a conceptual hearing.
Oh, absolutely. I've offered it.
What I'm trying to ask is, do you recommend that?
Absolutely.
Yes, no. Give me, give me a break here.
I do. Despite what Celia is saying, I do. Absolutely. I resent the implication of Celia.
Well, I don't think, I don't think she even, she even.
She's talking underneath her breath. I, I, I don't think that's. We're not, we're, she's not. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm trying to, um, to make you aware of something that was recently written in one of the Hampshire bulletins that cover, that cover all the, um, legislation and RSAs and everything that's going on. They talked about, can you hear me by the way?
Yes.
They, they, they talked a great deal about the ZBA approving things before it goes to to the town planning board. And they, it sounded like they were not in favor of that because it's because it's, th- th- these people should be going be, in requesting from the planning board what their project, the whole story of it, instead of coming in with one little piece of it. So I want to make you aware of that. That does exist. And I, I think you should all check that out because everybody, when I was on a ZBA, it was very difficult to do something without the plans. You know, you really don't. They'll give you what they want to give you, but you're not gonna see the whole picture. So I kind of agree what this was saying. So I, I hope you all to check that out. Okay, that's what I had to tell you.
Yeah. Thank you, Celia.
Yep.
So, back to the point I want to chew on here a minute is, uh, I, I, I've always had kind of similar, I guess, to what Celia is saying concerns that, that a developer wouldn't come first to the planning board to review the project in terms of what sort of what, what the plan is in general, and then certainly, uh, confirm, uh, your, your interpretation of the zoning ordinance and what, what they would need variances for and that sort of. It just feels like that just should happen. And then when they go to the ZBA, they've got at least some feedback from the, from the planning board as to, you know, what we, what we think the problem.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we have a requirement for that.
We don't. It's up to the, it's up to the applicant. Reason being, he can come in with a full plan to us. Goes to ZBA, they don't give him the variance. He has to change his plan. Where if he goes to ZBA, gets the variance first, then he can do the full, then he can come back with a full plan that he knows he's able to put on the ground. Obviously, in, in this piece, this piece of property is gonna be, would be an issue if he couldn't get the variance, but there's some that if you don't get the variance, you can change your plan, but you really don't want to go through the cost of getting one plan. Going to ZBA and saying, no, we're not gonna give you the variance. And then he has to go get and do a completely new plan.
Well, that's another six weeks, two months before they're able to do anything.
But I don't, I don't think that what you presented, the concept plan would be needed. You would bring.
No, no. That's what I mean. With the conceptual, I have no problem bringing the conceptual. All you, all you're saying is this is what I want to do.
You guys could amend the zoning ordinance to make the conceptual mandatory before they do anything.
Right.
That's certainly something.
Well, and, and I think probably they would, if we, if we talked about doing that, we'd probably want to discuss how we might need to have, uh, some criteria that if your project is these criteria, then you need to have a conceptual.
Yeah.
Before you go to the ZB. Otherwise, there, because there's a lot of projects that probably don't warrant that level of.
Right, right, right.
Discussion.
Yeah. I think, by understanding you correctly, um, this particular projects that he's proposing and other projects that are similar where it's just blatantly not gonna, the z- the zoning says, no, you can't do that.
Right.
So doesn't matter what we say, the zoning just black and white says, you're not gonna meet the setbacks. So the ZBA has to rule on it either way, no matter what we say.
Absolutely.
Uh, there's other projects, like you're saying, where if they come to us and say, this is what I'm proposing, and we look at it and they submit some, some basic plans. And it's like, well, you, we get some gray area here. You could have some issues with this. This is, we don't feel that this meets zoning. That's our opinion, saying it does not meet zoning. But it's just an opinion, an interpretation of what zoning's saying. And then, and then we deny and say, go to the ZBA.
Yeah. But it's also an opportunity to talk about things like drainage and.
Right.
Are you, are you really gonna be able to treat stormwater on a, a tiny site with a lot of intensive use? Because that certainly is very, uh, high on our priority, you know, uh, protecting the lake and properties along the river, that sort of thing. Permeable surface, stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, where you can give the developer a little guidance and feedback. Uh, and, and obviously, it won't fit, so definitely everyone agrees. You gotta, you gotta get.
Yeah, yeah. It's just like, it's just, just no way, if he came in with a plan.
Right.
And it says, I have three feet of setback from everything. It's like, well, that doesn't mean anything in zoning.
Right. But that's like, that's not the only issue. You know, may not be the only issue.
Are, are you all on Plan Link? You know what Plan Link is?
Yeah.
Yes. I Kurt's posted, I've seen Kurt post there before.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's probably what Celia was referencing. There was a thread on Plan Link recently. Plan Link is the state.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning listserv. Uh, many planning boards, zoning board members around the state, various towns are on that listserv, professional planners, OPD folks. Um, you know, there, there are robust discussions about things. Uh, you know, I, I wouldn't take anything that is posted on Plan Link as the gospel or legal advice, but there are a lot of interesting opinions shared back and forth on it. If you're not on Plan Link or aren't aware of it, it's, you know, I think it's worth joining just to follow along with some of these conversations so that, uh, you're aware of, you know, what's being discussed topically around the state. And this was a recent thread on, on Plan Link about the sequencing of when applicants could, you know, should go to the zoning board versus the planning board. And I think the, the, the takeaway from that thread was, there are a lot of good, a lot of good points to be made depending on how you interpret various phrases within legislation and, and, uh, um, but in any case, if you're not on Plan Link, I, I would recommend at least joining and, and following along and, you know, it, it, I think you could get it in the Daily Digest form if you don't want to, you know, get too many emails at, you know, at one time, but it's worth, it's worth checking out. Thanks, Nate. Do you have another comment, uh, Dr. Bofe? Your hands up. Before we leave the.
I know, and I can't, I can't take it down, apparently.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Here it is. It's gone. It's gone.
It is finally?
Yeah.
All right.
Rob, report. Can I ask a question just on a completely different topic? Has the Regional Planning Commission finalized its ten-year plan priorities yet? And if so, how did Enfield's project fare? We made it with our, um, um, traffic rotary. Yes. Through to, it's now being considered by DOT. So they, they, I know the final priorities were due or are due at the end of March, so they probably were finalizing that in recent weeks or. Yeah, they were doing some scoring and so forth at, uh, Renee Lake. Yeah, Renee. Is Renee now? Hi, Renee.
Hello, how is everybody?
Excellent. How are you?
Good, thanks. Um, I'm afraid I don't know that exact question. I'm not as much in the transportation meetings, so I apologize. Um, but I can find out for you guys and try to send an email tomorrow. But I think, um, yeah, I think there's been a lot of behind the scenes. I don't know that, say, it's like finalized, but I think a lot of the stuff is done, but I can confirm. I'll check in tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it, so, twenty twenty-four is over with. Could you provide us with a net gain of housing unit number?
Oh, yeah, sure. Should have been in the, uh, I think it was in that, uh, spreadsheet. Did you get the spreadsheet that I sent the year in?
You have to kind of manually work through the number and, and I, I think that spreadsheet, which is just excellent, just needs a little bit more, uh, you know, sort of running total of housing units demolished, housing units added.
My recollection is that somewhere around twelves.
It's twelve. You discussed it in January.
Yeah, okay. That would be the net. You know, we, you know, if you pull out a mobile home and you put in a new one, that's zero. You know, that, that's not a net gain at all, but um, I think the dwelling units increased by about twelve. And that's, I think that's about average. I think I've seen it since I've been here, as high as sixteen. A twelve is sort of the sweet spot, ten, twelve. Certainly not, uh, tons and tons of units going in for sure.
And then we, you, you've got on your list to, uh, update our.
Oh. He's got.
Why did you remind it?
He's got them.
Seeing as David's not here, we don't have a legislative report. I would just, I would just say, I think there is a mistake on the first page, the three twelve one.
We didn't get a copy of that, man.
Oh, it was online. It was in the stuff that, that Dave sent, uh, that, what it, what it says, he's, he, House Bill five seven seven, he says, allows detached ADUs maximum square footage from seven fifty to nine fifty, when in fact, by, by right, it now is moved that ADU will be nine fifty as a minimum. You can't have it less than nine fifty. Not a maximum nine fifty. He, this, the you cannot, a town cannot say your ADUs have to be less than, can be less than nine fifty. They can't come in and say, yeah, you're gonna have an ADU, but it can only be five hundred square feet.
Okay.
What it, what it says is you have to have a minimum, you can have as the bottom for an ADU is nine hundred and fifty feet. Nine hundred and fifty square feet. Right, the town.
Yeah.
He wants to a five hundred, he can do it. The town can't say, no, you can't do, you can't do anything above five hundred. Now you can't do. We can set it at nine fifty, but we can't set it at five hundred. You can't set it at seven fifty anymore. We're good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Running out of juice.
That's it for you, Rob?
That's it.
Okay.
Anybody has questions?
And we don't have any legislative reports, so let's move on.
Thank you.
That's excellent.
Let's move on to doing the minutes, cause.
This, this was a surprise. What I'm really looking for was the planning board.
Oh, yes. I started printing. I, I know, I got, I got a copy. You picked up yours already, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna, I've got your three binder sitting right there. Chantel's gonna be banging those out. Sorry, everybody.
Okay.
Next week we'll have.
Next, next week. Review and approve meeting minutes. Let's start with the February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Does anybody need copies? I do have some copies. I've got them here.
I got Molly.
We doing these one at a time?
We're doing it one at a time.
I'll move. We approved February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five minutes as submitted.
Well, you're second.
Second.
Any changes? Any? Hearing none? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstain.
Okay.
No, no. I can vote for that one.
You can vote for that.
I can vote.
You were here. You can vote for it. Okay. Let's move to the March twelfth. Anybody see any changes for March twelfth?
I do.
Okay.
The end of line two hundred and line two oh one seems like something is missing from that sentence. Mr. Russell noted that Maple and May Street's current zoning period. And I don't know what Mr. Russell was trying to, to, to recall.
Because it's got sewer and water, it allows. Is that it?
Uh.
It's in the village history.
Yeah, well, I think I was saying that it's the same as south of, I don't remember how I said it, but so, same as south of Route Four, there's not a difference when you cross Route Four and.
Right.
And it's got different, you know, the current zoning is the same.
It's the same as anything without, within the district.
Anywhere with water too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just died.
Yeah.
Probably should have had a note to fix it if I didn't.
Well, it was probably quarters nine by then. Anything else? I'll accept the motion. Move. Well, you're a second.
Are we gonna? Yeah, you're including.
The amendment. I'm sorry, has it? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention.
Abstain.
Can I just compliment the minutes? This is like, these minutes are fantastic.
Yeah, they are.
And I don't know how many, you know, meetings I've, I've seen.
I know.
Now, it, it, it's, you know, uh, number of them. This is the first thing I've ever seen on any set of bits that you have provided. They're, they're terrific. There isn't even a comment in place. Yeah.
Right.
So, good, great job.
The select board says the same thing and they said it two weeks ago.
Yep. And the ZB.
And the ZBA.
Taking minutes is not an easy endeavor, uh, because, I mean, you wanna, you don't need a transcript. And you don't want a transcript, but you need to get the gist of the meeting in a coherent and legible and, and, you know.
Should be able to follow what happened.
Intelligent way, and we get that.
Give me the minutes and go like.
What, what does that mean?
What does that mean? Yeah.
But it's. Old business. NH Hop Two Project Work.
We do have Renee on with us right now.
Hey, Renee, how you doing?
Hi, I'm good. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Good. Um, so just a couple of things, uh, quick updates, um, so just a couple of things to go over, should be pretty brief. Um, on my part, but, um, yeah, so, uh, we, oops, let me get my red notes up, sorry. Um, we've been, uh, poring through, um, the master plan summary and the zoning ordinance uh, relative to some of those questions in there, uh, as preparation for the April twenty-sixth event. Um, and diving into survey results, pulling out some of the key data that, uh, we had talked about last time from the master plan uh, to kind of highlight and kind of sup- in the support of why we're having this event, uh, April twenty-sixth. Um, so we're looking through a lot of that right now. Um, I did, uh, work on drafting kind of a postcard. I know we had talked about doing the mailing, so. I know we had talked about doing the mailing, so that was kind of my big thing for tonight. I was hoping to chat with the board about. And so I didn't know previously, how has the mailing gone before? I think in this hop, the funds are allocated to the town directly to do the mailing. We were going to do the design element. And so again, I've started some of that, and I'm happy to share briefly what we have. Just a quick sketch out of what we have so far and just thoughts on kind of that. Are, you know, are we still thinking mailing? Do you want to go more? I know you mentioned earlier, like newsletter, listserv, social media. So hopefully this graphic can kind of be pushed out in all those fashions too, if the board is amiable. But I can go ahead and show you guys what I have so far. I don't know if I can, Rob, can I share my screen?
You should be able to.
Have, have we decided final location for this?
Enfield community building.
I booked the community building.
Say it is community building, okay.
Yeah.
Cause I know there was some discussion of, well, maybe Whitney Hall will be ready, or maybe, you know, museum, or maybe the, the, community building is fine, it's just we, we're gonna have to settle on something.
We're waiting on the elevator.
Yeah, I don't.
There's, there's elevator parts on back order that they're waiting for.
Right.
It, it's the classic, any day.
Any game. And we still need to put carpet in the stair walls too.
Yeah, they do, they need to put carpet in.
So for the purpose of, of the postcard mailing, it's the community building, set in stone, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, well, we can't avoid that. I really, really want to encourage the Board Select and CIP to do something about the sound in there. It is terrible.
I know.
Your event you're gonna have with your planning group, I mean, it's just awful.
Yeah, there's no soft surfaces to, it's just a.
That would not be an expensive fix. Anyway.
acoustic tile or something.
Let's move on.
So. Oh, yes, so I've designed, this is a design for like a four by six postcard. And again, I'm not sure what, you know, the thoughts are, what in the past you guys have done that's been successful, whether it's a flyer or if you have some kind of setup. And then, you know, Robbie and I can certainly talk about printing and things like that. But this is just kind of, you know, I think keep it simple and impactful. Have really the dates and times and just a brief summary. And then obviously it's a postcard fashion kind of right now. So on the other side would have maybe, you know, follow us along here, you know, maybe some contact information, and then obviously the address and stamp side. So all of that postal information will go on the other side. But this is kind of what we've drafted up this far. And I think also on the lower part of the screen, you'll see there the outline of the housing and then the homes that evolve, communities that flourish. Sometimes with projects like these, having a tagline can be really beneficial. And imagine so that way as events keep happening or we're in places, we'll use this tagline and logo as a representative. And so that way people can connect it visually as well. So any initial thoughts?
First phrase, through the Hop Grant project, I don't think that does any work at all.
Okay.
To promote what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Just got a bad question, what is a Hop Grant? We don't want to answer that here.
Right.
The Enfield Planning Board is hosting a community forum to discuss or to, you know, to discuss what, you know.
Doesn't tell us why.
Yeah, to, to.
What, whatever. Change the word, you're right, it's a community forum, not public forum.
Yeah, or.
No, I, I actually think community forum gets more people here.
The Enfield Planning Board is, is hosting a community forum to discuss the future of that, or the village, you know, Enfield Village, you know.
Yeah. This is definitely still wordsmith, yeah, definitely still wordsmithing this. It's just more the design and impact and also just, does the four by six work for you guys?
Yeah. Is it your vision of the downtown, of the village district as opposed to?
Well, I, I mean, we haven't even really established much here, so I think they could say something about the village. Focus, it's focused on the village, this forum, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Well, village plus Route 4.
Well, it's what we're calling the village district though.
Yeah, but I don't think most people would.
Okay.
I think most people think.
Right.
Village starts at Hughes Park, goes to.
Go pro.
Top or Shands, or Drybridge or whatever. And Route 4 is.
So village and Route 4, absolutely.
Village and Route 4.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me stop showing that just for a second, so I can edit and add some of that detail. So village, so what's keywords that you like, village and downtown?
Village and Route 4.
Village and Route 4, okay.
I think it works good.
Okay.
Yeah, we kind of, we, I think we want to make sure that we impart upon the recipients of this postcard that this will be a forum. We don't want to make it sound boring, but we also want to make sure that they're aware that this is a forum that's going to discuss future land use in this area. Or, you know, we don't want to put people asleep or have, have something that, that sounds boring. We want them to come. But it is, we also want them to be aware that, that it is a, it is a community forum to discuss future land use or, or whatever the case may be in the village of Route 4.
I mean, future land use, just really broad term. Maybe density.
Visioning.
Yeah.
I think I thought of that one, that someone's.
Right.
generated some of the words they used in there or terms.
Well, what about the, the future of zoning in the village and Route 4?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Something along those lines, so people know what they're coming to.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, zoning makes sense, but I think sometimes it can have polarizing effects. So maybe just like a visioning, right? It's really visioning for the future, what, you know, zoning is.
I think the challenge there is envisioning for four years, and now we're discussing zoning.
Right.
This is, this is intended to react to specific, very specific ideas, not just.
Right.
If zoning is a trigger word, you want to pull the trigger.
Yeah, disaster.
We're doing a zoning rewrite.
Yeah. That's.
Sure. Okay. Um. And then.
Have you got a comment, Dr. Bofay?
I do, and then Sharon just came in from, been away, and she's got a comment as well.
Okay.
Tim, Tim had said some, some stuff about the sound. Obviously, I've been working on it some with the candidates forum, and I was just involved with another event in terms of working on getting a workable sound audio system in the community building. I, I truly believe it can be done with some care and, and intention. So, and I, and I will be willing to help with that if that's requested. Sharon?
Oh, yes, thank you. Hello, folks, I don't know if you can see me. So at any rate, very quickly, I know that you want people to come to this. The one thing is people have to understand how it applies to them or my hunches, unfortunately, they won't come. And if I was, I know you have a small postcard to put this information on. But if I was to think village, I'm thinking, you know, you guys have been working on this a long time. So you know what village is. To me, village is Main Street and, you know, right downtown, that's the village. It's not out to Shaker, it's not out to Maple Street, it's not out to May Street. So those folks won't come unless it's more specific too, including the streets of. If there's any way you can get, you know, some streets in there, then people will be like, oh, that's me. I should go to this. So that's just a comment, thank you.
Note, here's an idea, I'll just throw it out there, building on what Sharon just said, which I think is an excellent point. We got the back of the postcard to work with, right? We're only seeing the front of the postcard. We got the back of the postcard, could we put the polygon in some legible way on the back of the postcard so people understand what.
You need your mailing label, but.
You can mail.
Oh, you need your mailing label.
It's a good idea, you, you could put the map, then put together, even as a watermark.
Yep.
Just as a watermark.
On the back.
Yeah.
So it'd be very clear sort of what, and you don't have to do it fancy, but you know, the outline.
Yes.
So the other option.
How about key streets?
And we want to specifically say village, Route 4, Maple and May.
Well, if we can do a link, yeah, they took the page, they.
The map communicates a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the ghosted map.
Okay.
Put these words right over the face of the.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking that, as she said that, I was thinking somehow in utilizing the map and creating that on there for sure, yeah. So I'll talk to my colleague who's a little more, she can grab that map and graphic design that in there, so.
Okay. Can we do like a, a link to possibly the master plan webpage? And have more detail there?
We can do a QR code on there, yep.
I don't know if they're gonna learn a lot about this particular initiative.
No, we just have a place to put it instead of the.
A QR code. Takes them right to the map.
Okay. Somewhere where you can.
I'd rather have a website.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people don't understand QR codes.
Right.
Yeah, but just something where you can look at on your laptop or phone and blow up and get more detail. And what's gonna fit on a, yeah, I mean, as far as the postcard.
Not gonna work.
There's two sides of this postcard. What do we want on those two sides? We want the little blurb, please come to the community forum. When it's gonna be, where it's gonna be, what date it's gonna be, and the map.
Right.
Right? And a mailing label, and a space for a mailing label.
And what it's about.
Yeah.
Refreshments, people like free food.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and we do refreshments.
Should be, yeah, we got something, yeah.
So as long as those things, those key things are on, we've got two sides of a postcard to work with, as long as the two sides of the postcard have those key things on them, then, you know, I think we, we've done what needs to be, you know, done to try to, you know, use the postcard as best we can as a, we can always, you know, wax poetic in a listserv posting or other things with more detail.
Right, I mean.
For the purpose of a two-sided four by six postcard, those are the things you want on there, right?
We're still doing listserv, we're still doing posters, we're still doing the newsletter.
What I will ask from a graphic design perspective, and this is just my own preference, I'm not a fan of the cursive fonts on, on mailings. That's just me. But, you know.
Yeah, me too. Black and white bold print. Okay.
You get enough guidance there, Renee?
Yes, I think that's good. The other question I had following up from last meeting was, it was discussed about each member would put together like five bullet points for the proposed zoning districts. And I was just wondering where that's at and if, if Rob has it, if we, if I, we could have it so that in preparation for the event.
Yeah, Rob has it.
Yeah, he'll get it to you.
We all did our homework, of course.
Right.
I totally understand, it, it, the two weeks flew by, so I can't believe we're here already again. But that would be just be, and again, it's, they find, it'd just be really helpful in planning, and we have time still, you know, to incorporate that, but it, it'll help.
You know, on, on that, on that note, so this is March 26.
It's a month from today.
What is the, yeah, it's, today, our next meeting is April 9.
Yeah.
I really think we need to, we need to work hard on, on, or dedicate a significant portion of April 9th to actually.
It's a work session.
Planning the run of show of this event. Who's gonna do what, what information are we gonna present? What feedback are we soliciting? How are we gonna get that feedback? You know, I, I, I think we, we, we need to spend some time preparing.
Well, could we? Yeah, you're right. Because April, this postcard needs to get finalized and printed and mailed pretty soon.
I think, I think we can defer to Rob to work with Renee on that. I mean, I think we've given pretty clear guidance about what we.
Yeah, and he'll, he'll walk, walk it by Dan and David.
Yeah, and it can be, yeah, you're right, it needs to be, it probably needs, the postcard probably needs.
The postcard needs to go out sooner than later, yeah.
Depending where, just depending where you, you guys have printed before, we did a printing last year in conjunction with gonna blink on their name now, in Hanover. And if it's all done and put together, they have a three-day turnaround on printing, so it's usually pretty quick. And then they can get it to the mailing post office and in the mail. So, I mean, we're still okay on time, but yes, we definitely need to, you know, like you said, Rob and I can definitely work on hammering out the rest of the details. But, you know, if we can get it to printer by next week, Wednesday, I think we'll still be in okay shape for it to be in the mail and out to folks, and it'll be a drop usually. And again, this is what I've had experience with in the past. I don't know if Enfield's done mailings before and how it's gone, but a drop shipment to the post office directly, so it goes out pretty quickly.
So who, who are we mailing it to?
So. That's a good question. In the past, we do what's called EDDM, every door direct mail.
Well, so everybody in 03748.
And 49.
And 49. No thought to just limit it to the village, so send it to whole town. Yeah, everybody.
Affects everybody in town. Even if you don't live there, it will affect you.
Yeah, right.
So, and they'll be voting on it too.
Right.
So Rob, we, we have, we are deferring to you and Renee to finalize the postcard between now and, you know, the, our next meeting hopefully gets out in the mail before our next meeting, but obviously needs to go out sooner than later. I think we've given Renee some pretty clear guidance about what we're, what we're looking for in the postcard and kind of will defer to you to work with her to finalize that mailing sooner than later.
Do we have any hearings for the first meeting in April? No.
So we'd like to dedicate, yeah, we'd like to dedicate April 9th to working on the run of show for this event.
Yeah.
All the details, who's gonna do what and when, what the agenda is gonna be, how we're gonna seek input, you know, who's gonna run different things and kind of really roll up our sleeves and prepare that April 9th meeting.
That works for you, Renee?
Yes, yep, that should be, I believe I have that on my calendar, but I'll make sure. And that should work, and again, like we'll provide as facilitating, helping to facilitate, so we'll provide some of the outline. And to your point, like who's doing what, you know, can get deviated and things like that. That evening, yes, I have it on my, right on my email, uh, calendar for April 9th. So, yeah, we'll come up, the team is meeting tomorrow and then hopefully again on Friday as well to kind of go over some of this. And so we'll have hopefully a good, really good starting point and packet for you guys to work on on the 9th.
Thank you.
I do, it's going to, sure.
Dr. Bofay, have you got another comment? Your hands up.
No, I don't think that I am off, able to delete that again, maybe I did. Sorry about that, this is, this is not letting me do that. Maybe you did.
Oh, you're all set.
Okay.
Nope, there's no.
So I, I think Renee, maybe the, you know, the, the one thing that might be, I, it's, it's fairly straightforward for an elementary GIS person, but that polygon that we're talking about of the village. An elementary GIS person, but that polygon that we're talking about of the village. Needs to be. You know, a GIS, you're gonna need to create the image from a GIS map, basically.
Right.
Of that, that polygon with some key main.
I've got something, I could, I can, sorry, I could do some kind of a.
I mean, Upper Valley Regional Planning's got GIS in house, and this is like a minimal. You know, uh, GIS exercise for their GIS tech.
He's up to it, go ahead. Go ahead, Renee, I think you've got something.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna ask real quick, when you, you're, sorry, I'm not there in person, when you're referencing it, are you meaning the polygon that, like, the maps that we worked on last time? Where they are colored in and zoned? So it's the proposed one?
I don't know that we wanna show the colors per se on the postcard.
Okay.
Well, no, but.
They're just the outline of the area at large.
Just the outline.
Yeah.
But for the.
We could, it, within the forum itself, we could.
Yes.
That will be proposed then.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the April twenty sixth, we're gonna want that.
Yes.
A great big map on the wall.
Yeah.
Actually, we need two big maps on the wall. We need today's map as it is.
And then.
And then. The potential.
Yeah.
New map, and then you, cause then you, then you're talking about what is, what might be.
Could be.
And, and you're sort of giving better direction on the map, so.
Yeah.
So I guess that's one question for them is how, is can they make a map of what is, you know, the equivalent map of today?
They almost certainly have a layer in their database of Enfield's GIS. They did when I worked there ten years ago.
The, the trick is our current zoning is written with lots of exceptions. If you have this, then your zoning is that. If you have this, then it's that, as opposed to a clean map.
Well, it's, it's that map there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need to blow that up, stick it up there.
And they made that map. There's, that's their logo at the bottom, so they've got that layer and can easily recreate that.
And we just have that corner focused in on that corner.
Yeah.
Does that map follow the sewer lines though?
Now, that's the current.
No, what I'm saying is, is what we're discussing, like currently, if you have, within the R one, if you have sewer, you have different rules. Than if you don't have sewer. It's like Dan's house and my house are both in R one, but we have different rules.
Right.
And so we need a map that represents the current rules.
Oh, we don't have anything like that yet.
Do we, do we really need that? That only applies on the other side of the lake.
Oh, no, that, that applies in the whole area that we're talking about.
Right. Cause I'm water, no sewer. He's water and sewer, so we're both. R one.
Yeah, so, so you're trying to show people what the current zoning is.
So there is a layer to talk along and off the, the sewer and water layers.
Yeah. I guess what I'm getting is, is I'm not sure, is, I think we need our current zone now, but I'm not sure that just using that map communicates. What we're trying to communicate and what we're trying to get people to talk about, and we'll spend a lot of our time talking about. Well, in this case, you have this, in this case, you have that, and, right, the two maps are not as different as they look.
Right.
If you just draw R one through the whole village area like that.
I mean, you could probably take that map and turn the water and sewer layer on and just show, you know.
What, what I'm asking is, is can they draw the boundaries around those lots in GIS and create an equivalent GIS map?
I'm sure they can, yeah, that's, that's not a hard GIS exercise to do.
Wouldn't think so, but I don't wanna make work.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It's easy for me to say.
Right, right, right.
It's very different being the person doing it.
So basically, you want a map that shows all the lots that are currently served by sewer.
And water, cause they're, cause we have.
And water, right, and water.
But what if.
And just water.
Then you need that because they have different, they also.
To be a different.
Right, that.
You have a bullet list of, this is permitted uses.
Well, we, right, we can get into, but this is the GIS map itself.
Right.
They can be working on, and then, yeah, we would want, this is our current zone. Here's things to discuss, but, but as clear as you can be visually, cause just a big list is hard to be, a lot of folks.
Can you? Can you work with Rob on that, do you think, Renee?
Yeah, I think so. So I just wanna make sure I'm hearing, uh, right, so like basically, the map which highlight. Be a different color codes on like, the parcels that are water and sewers, one color. Parcels, areas that are just water only and maybe just sewer only, if that exists, um, and just highlight then by those color codes. We would then break out and kind of be able to showcase here, this is what you can currently do, and then here's what we're proposing, and so it juxtaposes and shows, like you said. It's not maybe a huge significant change, um, but it'll highlight what is changing in those.
Yeah.
Yeah, the goal is to focus the discussion on changes, not on what exists today.
Right. Yeah.
And, and those are maps that would be for the, the twenty sixth of April.
Right.
You know, we, those, those are not things where, you know, for the postcard or anything, for the postcard.
Right, right.
It's just showing the village polygon with some key, uh, key landmarks and stuff, just to orient people for the purpose of the postcard.
For purposes of zoning, doesn't, water doesn't come into it, it's just sewer.
Okay, that's fine. But I think, I think. Yeah.
Currently.
Right.
But future may not be. Future water may have a different.
But, but anyway.
Right.
That, that, that's the point, though, like.
Right.
You wanna have those, those prepared.
Right.
So you're talking about the right things, not spending two hours educating.
People on what today is.
Right, right, gonna do that as fast as possible, because we're gonna have to do that, oh yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we can definitely work on getting those created and then, um. There, I'm, I'll double check it, there should maybe room in, I think there should be room in the budget to have them printed up too, very large, and so again, having. The images, when people have come in, maybe on the walls, as they grab a food and drink, they can look at it. And kind of get that started in their heads before they even sit down. Yeah.
Go ahead, Karen. I was gonna suggest that on the next meeting, when we're discussing the details, um, as us, as a board. We skip, don't even, just delete off the agenda, the reports.
I agree.
Committee stuff and.
Unless select board's got something big.
Yeah, if nothing major happens, so.
Right.
That, that affects us even, because it just takes up too much time.
Yeah. I agree. I'm gonna tell David we don't need to know about legislature.
I can wait.
Or, or put it at the end, so.
Put it at the end, if we don't get to it, we don't get to it, but, yeah, this is gonna, this should be first on the agenda.
Yeah.
I kinda wonder if we ought not have a small committee that. Helps Rob and Renee kind of refine this stuff. You know, so we come back. Ninth even. It's, it's had some feedback from.
I've got time next week. I would appreciate it if you guys. Yeah, I've got a time next week, I can't do FOM at all because I can't pick stuff up as of tomorrow.
I'll, I'll throw myself in there, I may need to do it remotely, but.
Yeah, good.
Just make a try, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just come up, come up with a date, I'll go to all next weekend.
You know, if you just look, you know, for sounding board on some of the stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Toss some stuff by.
See if we can fit it in, yeah.
That way, maybe we can come in on the line with.
Yeah.
Something coherent.
At least a good, at least a good outline and we could come down with the, the final, yeah, we wanna do this, and this is who we want to do it. Yep. Anything else anyone's got? On this subject? Can we let Renee go?
Um, and I can, I'm pretty wide open next week, so yeah, we can, Rob, I'll connect with you, um, tomorrow or Friday, and we'll try to pin down. A couple of times to toss out and, uh.
Yeah.
Get that on the books.
Great.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, we got some addouts tonight, do we wanna? Talk about this?
If I suggest we do, I said. You would commit. Eric and I just to run quickly through the.
Yeah.
I think you should do then, it's, since you're gonna, at that point, when we get done with that, you'll understand what we're trying to accomplish here, and if you, uh. Take it all in and read it.
Yeah.
Have more context. You're gonna put it up on the screen.
I can, absolutely. Does everybody have, we, we printed comments for everybody here, too.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Uh, time continue. So again, this, this is just trying to, trying to establish a structure. Not really getting into the, the meat of Indian land use stuff. And I kinda wonder if maybe we shouldn't use concept. Ordinance or, or it's rough draft, is that, okay? This graph. So, um. These sections. I copied out of the city eleven and zoning, that's and in R one. And you'll see the. Basically, the, uh, actually, this, this is just the. Sorry, this is just the, the app, the app one. So anyway, these parts would be in the first section, and then you get to the land use districts. The zoning map would be, unlike what we've had in the past, it would be an actual map. Like a, that's. Filed with the town clerk, wherever else to make it official. Then general uses. Would just discuss, um. Exactly sure what that does, but anyway, then we finally get into these village districts, just roll out on.
Yeah.
So, uh, the R one would change only to the extent the village district changed it. R three, five would be, would be no changes. But I gave Kurt, he's working on a, a, a draft review. I took the language out of our existing ordinance and put it in the format of the new. So some of the sections had to get moved around to fit that. And I wanted to make sure, Kurt's gonna make sure that I did that right.
Yeah, actually, I went through them, I'll give you my draft.
Okay, good. So you probably got some corrections.
Oh, some minor, just minus though.
These districts are, you know, long-term things that will be worked on in future years. Whereas this year, we're focusing on the village district.
Right.
Only, so some of the other things on this list are things that are future year considerations, essentially.
And, yeah, it's just about everything.
Everything below there, yeah, exactly.
Well, not all of that, but, anyway, lake district, we could leave that off entirely and just put the word reserved down here. Uh, that may be confusing, maybe just leave it out entirely.
Yeah.
I, we'll have that debate. So anyway, um. Then we get to conservation, commercial, these two are existing, we're not gonna change any of that. It's rolling up there. Then we talked about overlay districts and. I think we resolved this debate about, should be, before be an overlay or a town district. I didn't change that, but anyway. That's how the zoning ordinance is laid out, and you come to the general provisions. And this is where, put sections in here like structure height limitation that apply townwide. Then if you drop further down.
Uh, Tim, before we go too much farther, can we scroll back to that page?
Absolutely.
Does Enfield have impact fees?
We do.
We do. We have impact fees.
They're in the, uh.
They're, they exist in, in theory.
We charge impact fees?
They exist in theory.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I.
I think it's in, in the zoning, I think it's a, a paragraph in the zoning permitting.
Permitting, but we don't have.
Both allowing, allowing. Okay.
And side plan, the side plan, right.
Yeah, you would know if, you know, if, if impact fees were charged, there would have to be a, a methodology, you know. For calculating the impact fees. That you'd have to define what specific categories of impacting the whole, the whole. Is it the long-term plan to establish impact fees? Because if it's not, then we don't need that. If it is, then we do.
I, I, I've not given that a single thought, I have no idea.
It's a complex topic, um, and I know this cause I've, I've written impact fees in, in a number of towns and, and, uh. You know, it's.
I think we did it once or twice.
We allowed it. Right.
And, so, never, so, I, 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 let's just refocus, right?
Right. Idea is not, is this the right list? Well, it's, is this the right organization? Cause I don't disagree with you, that that's worthy of discussion, but, um, right. But the idea of general provisions are things that apply everywhere, right, like in.
Right.
Um, and, and like Tim and I, you know, we're back and forth, I'm like, should building, uh, and structure height limitations be a townwide thing? Or should that be listed in each district itself? And that's the kind of decisions that, you know, but structurally, general provisions applied to the whole town seems like. You know, we thought that seemed like a reasonable thing, even if this isn't the correct list.
Right.
When it ends up.
Yeah.
Then you come to, uh, standards for specific uses and, again, these were generally. And this is just the way the city organized it, I, it could be done differently, but you know, then, these things kind of get. We'd have to have, we'd have to pull out our existing ordinance, what we talk about in terms of home businesses and various things. Put those in there and then chew on them about, is that sufficient for now? Uh, because I think the idea was not to change much of this, other than the village. Keep going. Um, then we use other sections that we, we'd have to fill in. Blood plane development's already dictated, so that's, that's kind of there. Anyway, so as we finish a section, we get tucked into this format. And you go to the next, uh. It's the introduction.
Yeah.
Purpose, yeah, here we go. Uh, and this is where we start to get actually some words on paper. This kind of bullet stuff or basic boilerplate stuff here.
Hang on, what's that, Tim?
Yeah.
Maybe you should be sharing.
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this purpose section, if you scroll on up there, um. That's good. Yeah, so, uh, the, the color scheme I used, if anything in here is in blueprint, it's from the existing zoning ordinance. Green is new wording. Orange is, uh. Yeah, I didn't, I, I don't even think we have any, we just in there, orange resilience, when they did some suggestions, anyways, at one point, we had some of that in there, I'll take that out. Uh, black, what I mean adapted from the city of Lebanon is that, use the words, but obviously change city to town and. Things like that. Uh, highlighted green. Means it's probably a controversial topic we need to talk about, and yellow needs further attention. And blue is where, uh, if one section cites a reference in another section. I just highlighted it in blue because we gotta make sure the reference is correct. Anyway. So for the ordinance is enacted for that and that, and then the purpose of affecting the goals of the town of Enfield Master Plan. And then I, I thought, well, maybe we should. And then I, I thought, well, maybe we should, and, and, and this is a major conceptual thing here we need to decide on. Do we pull the sections out of the master plan that informed the zoning ordinance and, and paste them right front and center and, and before you even get into the land use regulation, they say, these are the sections that led us to decide or to recommend certain, certain provisions in the ordinance. And I'm kind of on the fence about that because if you change the master plan, let's say in the three years, you might have to go back to the, the zoning ordinance and change it if those excerpts were here. Another way to maybe do that is have a you have the, the voted on version of the master plan and then you have a publication version that has these excerpts listed in a box or something off to the side. Anyway, I, I did it as if we were gonna just include everything here. So this is a excerpt, excerpt right from the zoning or the master planer. Scroll on up, Rob. As well as all this. So that's, that's the reason why we're, we're, we're promoting the zoning ordinance. Keep going up. And then that's not out of the master plan. That's just a, a point made. And, and if black starts to pull in stuff from the city's ordinance. Uh, I think we were kind of.
Well, my comment there was we don't need it.
But, you know, we don't need it. But I left it there just to chew on.
Yeah.
Roll on up. Here's some blue out of our own ordinance. Pluckability of the, the ordinance. Keep going. Uh, again, the black is from the city. You can read through those and chew on them. Keep going. Administration, one thing I didn't like about the city ordinance was in the first chapter, they talked about the death and doom that will befall you if you, if you violate.
Right.
Some of the ordinance. I thought, well, can, can we just put that at the back somewhere?
Yeah.
Maybe we should have it front, but, you know, so here we just talked about basically the, the your job, Rob. And how you're going to administer this, this ordinance. And I thought at the tail end of the thing, the, the whole chapter on enforcement, that would get more into that, that stuff. We could put it here.
Right.
Maybe not.
The carrot's all up here, the stick's at the end.
Mm hmm. So that was. Is there anything further?
That's it.
That's it. So that's.
Oh, no. There you go.
Talked about um, right, how to amend the ordinance. We don't have this section. This was from the city. I highlighted in this in yellow because maybe this is not what we want to say. I just wanted to bring, draw your attention here. Roll up further. Again, amendment stuff. Bonfleix, this all kind of made sense and adapted from the city. And then uh, this last part here. Eric had pointed out, he thought this was a little confusing.
Yeah.
But I think what it's basically trying to say is if, if you've got a, like a homeowner's litigation. They're not gonna null easements and covenants or agreements between parties and, but we may want to think about that wording of that. One of the reasons I like the city is I know the ordinance has been challenged many, many, many times. Gone to court. You know, they've either won or lost. They've come back, they've reworded, they've got professional planners, et cetera, that have looked at this stuff. So I feel like it's pretty vetted. Maybe I'm completely wrong there, but uh, and enforce any of these paragraphs. If you can find a better version to address the issue, then send it my way now. So anyway, if you could just read through that, think about it, make comments. Yes, you can't really. Send them, send them to me.
Send it to you. He can send them to you.
Yeah. Any questions?
No. I like the work you've done.
I have one comment uh regarding the master plan sections. Would there be a way for us to just reference within a few sentences, maybe that it came, you know, the, the ideas came from the master plan, is it a chapter, like is it the vision chapter? Just call that out so people could, if they want to, reference the vision chapter in the master plan and get a better understanding without us having to copy, paste, cross-reference and move changes.
Well, this is gonna be online. You could put a link to it.
That too. Because there is a lot of confusion to think between.
Yeah.
The zoning ordinance and the master plan and how they're together.
Yeah. There's one approach and actually the approach I think we have now, which is not that it's linked or anything, but you know, it's not, it's the provisions of the master plan that apply to the particular land use regulation that you're trying to describe is not it's not linked or, or shown here.
Right.
And.
I like your link idea.
Well, the, the other side of that though is it does, even if you change your master plan, that doesn't change your vision. And you could leave it there. Doesn't, you know, you're not gonna, I don't see you going in because you've changed the master plan that you're gonna change your, your ordinance.
Well, only that, could you scroll back up to the very beginning?
But it's not an ordinance at that point.
No. The master plan is not an ordinance.
Right.
All right.
It's more of an explanation. It's the purpose.
Right. So like this, this is the vision statement for the.
Right.
I put it here. Because if you're reading the ordinance, it's just, it shows what you're trying to do.
But, that's why I agree with leaving this here and not, it doesn't if you change your master plan, you're not gonna change your.
This is very broad language anyways.
It is.
And it's like. It gets more specific when you get to the actual.
I know.
Village district. There's quite a few uh I don't have that tonight, but.
Yeah.
I, I think we have to be careful about putting much master plan language in the zoning ordinance. The master plan, e- essentially that begins to codify the master plan as, you know, an ordinance in and of itself, which is not the intent of a master plan, right?
Master plan is thirty thousand feet.
Yeah, here in the purpose section. I maybe there's a way of, 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 of honestly, I'd probably end, I'd, I, if it was me writing this, I'd, the first sentence you have there in green, I'd say period and there you go.
Yeah, I was gonna say just that. As, as proposed in the master plan, as proposed or as blank in the master plan, the following zoning ordinance is. Something, yeah, but somehow.
The purpose of affecting the goals of the Enfield master plan adopted March twenty, twenty twenty-two and subsequently amended, period.
Perfect.
Yeah.
You know, a, a, and, and that way, you know, we're, we're not codifying the vision statement as an ordinance or, you know, it, it I think we could run into issues with.
Uh, to implement the vision of the master plan.
Yes, I mean, the, the purpose of this is to, the purpose of the, any land use regulation is to affect the goals of the master plan, to, to bring the goals of the master plan to reality.
Yeah.
Um, but I think we could just.
Yep.
Say that briefly and not have, not cut and paste the, you know, vision statements and stuff into.
And have a link to the master plan on the digital version.
You could. The, the only, the only risk there is links change, right? You know, the website, you know, town website gets reoriented or something like that, and then all of a sudden you've got a link that's in an ordinance and it.
Right.
Dead. And that, that could create issues.
Okay.
That's why I think, I think the way to accomplish what you're saying, they, and I, I, I really tend to agree with you and going down that or.
It's okay.
With me.
Um, is that um, uh you know, this is the legal document. But when we publish a hard copy of the ordinance, we can always put the, the excerpts in, in the print as, but they're not part of the, the official ordinance. Uh, and this, this will become a little more apparent when we start talking about the village district, right? We're gonna go to this forum. And everyone's gonna say, well, the, the reason we're doing the village district is because it is the master plan says we should. Well, what does the master plan say about that? What are the words that are gonna guide us?
That, that's excellent stuff for the forum.
Yeah.
To set the stage of what should be in this ordinance, here's what the master plan says. As a, as a mechanism for setting the stage for getting public feedback.
Yeah.
You know.
We set the master plan and these are the excerpts that are guiding us.
I think that's, I, in fact, I, I think we s- start with that.
Yeah.
At the, at the public forum, a little, a little, you know, five minute overview of here's what the master plan says. We just adopted this master plan. It was all this public input that went into this. Here's what it says. We're trying to, we as a planning board are trying to take that you know, vision in the master plan and translate it into you know, uh, land use regulation to affect what the town's vision was. Here are some ways we think that could be done. Tell us if we're on the right track or wrong track. For, for that sort of purpose at a public forum and, you know, setting the stage for that, it's perfect. It's exactly what you want to do. But putting it in, you know, in, in text, in the ordinance itself, I would advise not to do it yet.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't married to that idea. We just, you know, that's, that's good feedback.
Yeah, that's good feedback. It's. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay.
And as you think, more things.
We'll, we'll get it to him. He'll get to that way and that way and.
I'm just making notes for myself. Anybody get anything else from tonight? We'll call it new business.
No, like, like I say, I just would, I, I would be interested in knowing how, how the root four project bared in the uh, in the ten-year plan, hopefully. Uh. We can uh before the next meeting, you know, see how things work with that. Because I, I know they had to send draft priorities in in November, but I know final priorities are due at the end of March, so they probably were working with their TAC and, and like recently.
Just. The government had a project and so did we that sort of made the grade, so to speak.
Yeah.
Uh, there was one in Charlestown that did not make a grade.
Hmm.
I don't think Claremont into one either. They may have been going for a TAP in Claremont, which is totally different than TAC.
Right, right.
Too many acronyms.
What was Lebanon?
I remember correctly, um it's their Hanover Street, right, High Street, that whole, what we, we always call dysfunction junction there and the, the five corners.
Exactly.
The mechanic, yeah, exactly. Where the APD owner and the whole deal there. It just makes no sense. And then for.
The, the greens, same thing.
TAC, they have a good one, which is to basically finally finish the linkage of N, of Lebanon downtown with West Lebanon. As you guys know, they've done a lot of work on, on Miracle Mile. There's now sidewalks.
Right.
It's sort of Peters out on Mechanic Street. There's sections of Mechanic Street. There's no sidewalks. And they really want to get, so you can walk on a sidewalk from Lebanon to West Lebanon.
You can walk on the Mascova Greenway.
You can.
Yeah.
Which is a, a lovely facility.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
I might accept a motion to adjourn.
I would be happy.
Yeah, hope so.
You're gonna turn into a pumpkin.
I know I am. I gotta be in.
He's got surgery.
Six thirty tomorrow morning.
Oh.
To get my second eye.
You're gonna vote on the motion?
No. Non-debatable.
All right.
All in favor. I'll have a bow. Anybody can stay. Eight thirty-four. Yeah.